Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for your patience as we had an excellent workshop prior to this good discussion, and we're sorry that we ran into time, but it was important discussion for us to have. So we thank you for allowing us to have that time, and we appreciate your willingness to let us start a few minutes late. As we get started, we will have our student representative, Mr. Jalen Mitchell, lead us with our opening statement.
Good evening. We request that all cell phones and pagers be turned off or to vibrate during the course of this meeting. Thank you. It has become a tradition to honor our nation at each of our board meetings by presenting the colors and reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. The colors tonight are being presented by the award-winning National Junior ROTC Color Guard from Norview High School under the direction of First Sergeant Chris Bertrand. Please rise and remain standing for the presentation of colors and the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance.
And the Pledge of Allegiance will be by Ms. Savannah Grant from Norview Elementary. So Ms. Savannah and her grandmother, please come on over here to the podium. We welcome you.
We will now have our presentation of colors.
Colors guard! Up, left, right!
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Ready, march! Colors guard! Right, march!
You may be seated.
Let's give Savannah a round of applause. So now we're going to move into the first of two budget public hearings that the board will undergo to get your feedback on the budget that we are going to be set to approve next year. So we would welcome anyone who has signed up to speak just on the budget to come, but prior to doing that, we have Ms. Ingram that's going to be giving a few words prior to that. And Dr. Boone?
Good evening. Dr. Gabriel, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. As Ms. Ingram comes to the podium, the budgeting process is not just an event, not just a couple of times a year, but it really is an ongoing opportunity for us to identify the resources that are needed, align those resources with the best outcomes, and then to support our staff and faculty. Community and Norfolk Public Schools team member input is very important as we frame and shape this. Ms. Ingram is going to just talk briefly about what our process is, our timelines, and then we look forward to hearing from the community, Dr. Gabriel. Ms. Ingram?
Dr. Gabriel, Mr. Clanton, school board members, Dr. Boone, good evening. I would give you briefly some opening remarks prior to the public hearing for our fiscal year 2020 budget. The budgeting process is actually a year-long process. Once we finish one, we're continuously looking at how to gather information to prepare for the next budget year. So in October, we submitted information to our departments to submit their budget requests to us. So we have those budget requests back now, and we are reviewing those with the department managers. Also during this month, we are also looking at refining enrollment projections because our March ADM determines our state funding. So we are gathering information to put together for a preliminary budget, which would then be presented to Dr. Boone and her senior team will come together to develop a budget to present to the school board. By law, we have to have at least one public hearing, but we, as the district, will have two. The first one being tonight to gather input before we actually get into the really nitty-gritty parts of developing the budget, and the second one will be in March, which is after the superintendent has presented her budget to the school board when they are doing deliberations. So then the citizens will have another opportunity to give input towards the budget process. So after the budget public hearing for the day, in December, we will be expecting to hear recommended or introduced budget adjustment to the second year of the Bidenian budget that was passed last year. The governor will make his recommendations for adjustments to help us determine our state funding piece. And like I said, after that, we will be presenting to Dr. Boone, the senior team will be getting together with information, and the superintendent will be presenting to the school board probably in February. School board will have about a month or so to do its deliberation and approve a proposed budget, which is required by state law, to go to City Council on April the first. So we are really now beginning to get into looking at what are the requests and looking at revenue projections and enrollment projections. So that's basically, in a nutshell, very quickly, the process and where we are in the timeline.
Thank you. And public comment is not limited to just the public hearing. You can always... Well, the public comment for this hearing is for just the budget, but the public at any point in time can reach out to board members, not just at this particular hearing or the one that we're going to have later on, on their feedback for the budget. So I don't want them to think that they are limited to that. So thank you very much, Ms. Ingram. If you have signed up to speak, I would just ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, and we will start.
Madam Chair, when we have seven members signed up to speak, the first one will be Demetrius Gooden, followed by Leander Johnson.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening to Chairwoman Dr. Gabriel, Vice Chair Clanton, Superintendent Dr. Boone, and all of our board members. My name is Demetrius Gooden, and I am the Vice President for the PTA at Larry Moore Elementary. I would like to thank you for providing an opportunity for us parents and citizens to weigh in tonight on the budget priorities. Larry Moore Elementary truly reflects the model of Norfolk Public Schools. We are proudly diverse, and we have experienced significant academic success. Excuse me. In order to ensure the continuing of Larry Moore's success, we ask that you consider these budget priorities. We need our full-time teachers, reading, and math specialists back. These positions were split about two years ago. Our specialists are no longer assigned only to Larry Moore. Their attention is split in between multiple schools, and their caseloads have doubled. They're only spending about half the time that they were previously with our Larry Moore students. This decision to decrease their time at individual schools has hurt the staff morale and has slowed their academic progress. I'm so sorry. So we have a lot of gifted students at Larry Moore, and we just want to keep them pushing on and moving forward with all the academics that they do every day. The second thing I would like you guys to consider is facility maintenance. Last year, the school board received a facilities report that ranked the schools based on their maintenance need. Larry Moore ranked at the top of the list for the schools that need the most expensive repairs. We take time, we know that it will take time to fully address Larry Moore's needs in full. However, we ask that you set aside funding to address the routine maintenance and the immediate facility repairs. For example, roof tiles that were damaged in spring were just now repaired a few weeks ago after multiple requests. We are very grateful, very, very grateful to the administrators and the staff who pushed the repairs through. However, the delayed repairs called unnecessary wear and tear on the already old building. We ask that you provide something in the budget to make sure that these issues can be handled in a timely manner. Also, we would like to have money in the budget to improve school safety measures. We want our children to remain safe at all times, and we ask that there be more cameras and buzzers at all of the entrances at the school. Along with our specific request, we ask that you consider providing a raise to all of our Norfolk Public School teachers and staff who work hard to take care of these children every day. I would like to thank you personally, on behalf of Larry Moore Elementary School, for considering these requests. The Larry Moore PTA looks forward to the continuing partnership with the school board, staff, and community. Have a wonderful evening.
Yay! Go Larry Moore!
We'd like to leave a copy of what you read to us. You can leave that with the clerk, and that way we can have it. Thank you.
And after Mr. Johnson, we will entertain Ms. Jacqueline Glass.
I hope that the school board will consider these very important objectives, and I hope you will provide for these objectives in next year's school budget. Number one, on-time graduation and slumping SOL scores. Number two, increased teachers' pay. Number three, sufficient amount of textbooks such that all students will be able to carry their textbooks home. Number four, church-school partnership. Number five, redesign the buildings and our curriculum to meet the academic needs of the 21st century students. Number six, summer enrichment program to help failing students in the classroom. Number seven, create a Saturday school. Number eight is to place more emphasis on preschool education. Number nine, every student should enroll, that is enrolled at the Norfolk Public School, should have the wonderful problem of options. That means that when they graduate from high school, they should be able to go to work or to go to college, and those are wonderful options. Next one is we have to, the school board has to increase their accountability and transparency, especially when dealing with parents and concerned citizens in the community.
Good evening, Chairman, Superintendent. My name is Jacqueline Glass. I am the proud owner of two citizens of Norfolk Public Schools, and I'm here to make my comments about the upcoming possibilities within the budget. I think what I have to say goes along with what the young lady from Larry Moore said. So every Wednesday, I go to Coleman Place Elementary, and I read to a group of students, and they are really excited about reading. They love it. But the sad part is that I know one day, some of them won't love it because of our literacy concerns within our schools. I actually have a bunch of kids that come to my house after school. A handful, a handful of K-3, two first graders, two second graders, a fifth grader, and two seventh graders. Only three out of the 10 kids that come to my home are on reading level, on grade reading level, which is pretty disturbing. I've had no fear than five parents and about three, five parents asking me about, "Do you know anybody who can help me tutor with math? Do you know anybody who can help me with reading? Do you know anybody in the community that can come and help out my kid?" And I see that as a problem, right? Because I know I'm not the only person in the community that wants to show up for our kids to fill in those gaps. So as we look at the gears that we have, this redesign gears, you have that literacy piece, but you also have that innovation piece. And when one moves, the other should move too. So what if there was a means within the budget to have a connection, a connecting source for parents, for teachers that want to have their side hustles because we know they need that, for nonprofit organizations, for churches and community groups, to be able to say to a parent or say to a caregiver that, "Hey, I'm here as a tutor. I'm here, I'm available to you for math." I'm saying reading in particular because that's the biggest problem that we have here. And I know that there's tons of things that need to be fixed. So what I'm asking, that somewhere in the budget, that there be a little piece for maybe starting a school-to-community online network where we can have people that are willing to come to the table to support in the neighborhoods, because we can't expect that our teachers do it all. Because like I said, I go to Coleman Place Elementary School every Wednesday, and they are excited. They love it. But when real grades come about, and they're failing in everything, maybe except for math, a couple of them, that we're failing them not only as a school, not only as a board, but as a community. So give us as a community the opportunity to show up. I know that we don't have the luxury of having an organization that's a conduit for you guys in the community, but I'm asking, since we don't have that organization, that we create something that is, that allows for some just-in-time resource needs. We have the people who want to help. Let's get the people that want to help to the people that need it.
Madam Chairwoman, that will conclude the budget portion of the public comments.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on behalf of the budget? With that being... Oh, yes.
Good evening, school board, Dr. Boone, members of the administration, and the audience, the community. I didn't realize this was a budget item, but since listening, I said I might as well add to it. I'm currently working at Little Creek Elementary School, which I'm not sure that everybody knows, that that's a double building, and I just wanted to bring about the fact, consider this...
Hold on a second. When you come up to the podium, can you just state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Lynda Stokes, and I'm a Nocturne native and alumni of the Norfolk Public Schools. Consider this. Your cell phone's ringing during the meeting several times. Someone coughing or talking in the middle of a golf swing. Someone yelling "Airball!" when the throw was about to make a basket. A dog endlessly barking when you're trying to sleep. A kid getting a set of drums on Christmas Day. We rushed the silence and put a stop to this annoyance because it is irritating, aggravating, and causes us to lose focus. I'm saying that this is what Little Creek Elementary School has been putting up with for several years in the auditorium, because the seats are the original seats that they have had since the school opened. And when there's a program or an assembly in the auditorium, the squeaking seats become a nuisance. Tommy Smigle was there last year to give a presentation about the fifth graders going to Discovery. He stopped several times because the students were disrespecting him by making the seats And I said, "It's not the students. We're beating the students up, and it's not the students. It's the squeaking seats." I tell you, I go into the auditorium, and I get the kids, "Just look, don't move, because if you move, I'm gonna rip your arm off." That's the way I look, because they're gonna make the seats squeak. And I sort of say that, "Please put that in your budget," on top of the fact that because the buildings are not connected, the primary side with the elementary side, the young ones can't come to gym when they have their resources, when it's cold, when it's raining. They told me that it's because it's a football field. When? In the summer, when we're not in school. But 10 months out of the year, it's a school where these kids have to be walking back and forth. I know, I have to do it every day. Anyway, that's my budget items. Thank you.
Is there one more hand up yet? Yes, Mr. Hawkins, come on up.
Good evening, school board chair, vice chair, members of the Norfolk School Board, administrative team, and community. My name is Philip Hawkins, Jr. I reside at 3597 Mississippi Avenue in the city of Norfolk. I am a teacher at the PB Young Senior Elementary School. I teach pre-K, and I am also the president of the Education Association of Norfolk, which is the local affiliate of the Virginia Education Association and the National Education Association, working with Norfolk Public Schools. Good evening. Tonight, I am asking, on behalf of our employees of Norfolk Public Schools, that we focus on raising our salaries for all of our school employees as we continue to look at Phase Three of the Compensation and Pay Study. Last year, we are very grateful that the city of Norfolk and this leadership body worked tirelessly to give us a 3.3% raise. That did make a difference, and we were also able to receive additional funding for hard-to-staff schools, my school being one of them. We did receive bonuses that we will receive to support the work that goes on in these schools that are still yet challenged to become fully accredited. However, we do not want it to stop just with our teachers who are in the classroom, but we also want to emphasize the needs for our education support professionals. Two weeks ago, we recently celebrated the American Education Week, not only in Norfolk, but across the country, where we recognize the work of all of our public schools in America and the work that we do with our children to help them be successful, no matter where they go. But we cannot omit the work of our support professionals. When we think about the work of our custodians, when we think about the work of our bus drivers, our children would not be able to get to school safely and home safely if we did not have our bus drivers. When we think about our instructional support staff, our teacher assistants, our media assistants, our office staff, our school nurses, our cafeteria workers, who are still yet, in many cases, not earning a living wage. So I am asking for this body to look at the budget as we continue to have deliberations, and of course, I do appreciate meeting on a regular basis with school administration, but also working with each and every one of you to come up with solutions as we carry those solutions, not only from this body, but also to the Norfolk City Council, which has a responsibility to this funding process, as well as our state, which we will be going to Richmond, and we will be rallying on Richmond on Lobby Day on January 28th. And we're asking everyone, not just teachers, but all stakeholders across Norfolk, to come and join us as we ask for higher funding for all public schools, not just Norfolk, but across the Commonwealth, as we have been wearing red for Ed, for public education, every Wednesday. And I do appreciate all of you supporting that initiative in Norfolk Public Schools.
This will conclude the public hearing on our budget item, and now we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Each month, we're excited to be able to showcase many of the great things that are going on in Norfolk Public Schools, experiences that our students are having, opportunities that our faculty are participating in, and ways in which the community supports us. Each month, this report is put together in video form through our Communications Department and particularly Channel 47. So I'd like to thank them for bringing this forward to us each month. And I'd ask them to roll the video, please.
Phase one of the construction of the new Camp Allen Elementary came to a close as students occupied the completed building for the very first time right after Veterans Day. These excited students now have access to a new gym, a discovery center, and new classrooms with innovative technology, thanks to the federal government, the city, and of course, the hard-working staff at the school.
I have to say, our staff has done an absolutely amazing job with all of the preparation. They have been gracious and given up their free time. They've set up classrooms that are warm, inviting, and certainly going to be engaging, so we're very excited.
Sometimes, children forget that there's a whole village out there that appreciate them and love them, and to me, the new building communicates that someone's thinking about them and understands what they need to have to be able to be productive citizens in our next generation. And so the teachers and the personnel bring the passion. The building says, "Yes, we love you."
Approximately 2,500 fifth graders from every elementary school in the district visited Naval Station Norfolk for the Second Annual STEM Day. Students were able to see multiple kinds of aircraft up close, go onboard a destroyer and an aircraft carrier, and experience a wide array of fun displays from various groups and organizations. The goal is to expose these students to the variety of STEM careers that are available locally and in the military.
Yeah, we're having a great time with all the kids here at the STEM event at the Naval Station Norfolk. We're with the Navy's stewards of the sea, talking about environmental stewardship, the way the Navy protects the environment while we conduct the necessary training activities to train our sailors to deploy. Oh, I think it's a great event. I think it's good for the kids, and I think my team here is having a lot of fun as well.
We're a Navy town. Anything we do with the Navy is exactly what we should be doing. We have so many military families in our schools. It is a wonderful opportunity, and they're going to see the Navy is a great career choice.
I hope they get the opportunity to see careers that they might not have thought about, have the opportunity to talk with their friends, maybe more closely about their own parents that are in the military, so that now their friends have a better connection of what they may be talking about when their mom or dad or relative goes out to sea. They now have a connection they can make personally to that.
As the parent of a fourth grader, I'm very excited to see this age of children here. I know that they are very excited. They love to climb on the equipment. Experiential learning is very important to them, and to see firsthand, I'm hoping that they'll get, this is something that they'll remember for many years to come.
The National Math and Science Initiative awarded a three-year grant to Lake Taylor and Booker T. Washington High Schools during a special program at Nauticus. This Department of Defense grant, which is for over $600,000, provides training to teachers at these schools, along with other resources and supplies, in order to help them increase their advanced placement offerings. In addition, students will receive instruction that will ultimately help them succeed in AP courses and prepare them for life after high school.
What is so special about the NIMZI work is that it supports the teachers with a strong professional development. It supports the students with very strong learning strategies, and it strengthens their interest in advanced placement courses, and it also strengthens the potential for them to leave and complete those courses with qualifying scores of three or better.
We think we're going to see several things...
We think we're gonna see several things. Primarily, we want to see the number of advanced placement offerings grow. That's very important, that we expand the base of rigorous and challenging coursework. But we think we're gonna see an incredible increase in the number of kids who are gonna step up and accept the challenge of AP coursework. And the third thing is, we think they're gonna be incredibly successful in terms of achieving qualifying scores on AP exams.
We want students to have the experience of being in rigorous courses. We want students to have the experience of what it would be like to be in a college class in high school, and then know that when they get to that point, that they'll have already been through it.
Willard Model Elementary served as a site for showcase pre-K in Virginia as educators from around the state visited the district to learn more about instructional support in preschool. Norfolk Public Schools was chosen as a location for showcases due to its great success with the Virginia Preschool Initiative, or VPI Plus. The visitors observed a classroom and discussed what they could take back to their own classes. Both organizers and guests knew what they wanted to get out of this unique event.
The opportunity to reflect upon their actions, how they use the materials in their classroom, how they engage the students in the conversation, hopefully would eventually decrease disruptive behavior as well as increase student outcomes.
I like the back-and-forth interchanging that the teachers are giving with the children. I think it's wonderful to be able to get out amongst other organizations, other than just being with just one HRK.
They've got like so many visuals, and just the way that the visuals are set up and the open-ended questions in each center is a great reminder, you know, if I forget something, or my parapro, or even if the sub is in there, that's a great tool for everybody to use.
So in classroom visits, I'm seeing lots of open-ended questions. I'm seeing higher-level thinking and problem-solving, and that's happening not in a large group way, but embedded in centers and instructions. So the teacher is asking really good questions, posing problems, and having the kids help solve them with her. I'm just really amazed. I'm loving it.
Lake Taylor Middle, Ruffner Academy, Jacox Elementary, and Ingleside Elementary received nearly $80,000 in new band and orchestra instruments, thanks to the Goode Family Foundation and a grant from the Mr. Holland's Opus Foundation. Students at Ingleside celebrated their new instruments with some special guests from the city and school system, along with those who helped make this possible.
My family is very involved in the arts. We're very dedicated to the arts. We believe that the arts are an essential part of a child's growth and learning, and will make the world a better place. So any way that we can help to bring the arts to all kids, we pile through with that.
I think it's an absolutely wonderful opportunity for these children to experience music and learning an instrument. As a former saxophone and piano player myself, I know how important it is and how it's just, it unlocks a new language, and this really becomes a lifelong experience.
I feel good because, you know, not every school doesn't get to have new instruments, and also, some of them don't even have instruments at all. So yeah, I feel great about it.
Well, it brings attention to our entire school district and our music program, and it supports these kids as they start their journey. And I think having a new instrument just lends a new level of excitement. This is the culmination of a lot of hard work and effort, but it's very well worth it.
It makes me feel like special, that my school and my friends are very special, that they're, think about us, our school, to pay for new violins and violas and cellos.
As part of Norfolk Public Schools' mission to encourage students to continue their education beyond high school, the district partnered with Virginia Wesleyan University for their annual College and Career Fair. Students from all five high schools convened on the university's campus to meet with representatives from dozens of higher education and technical institutions with the hope of discovering opportunities after graduation.
So we're at the Tidewater College Fair. Today, we brought juniors and seniors with us. We brought 100 students. And the biggest goal for us is exposure to colleges and careers, so they can meet representatives who are reviewing their applications, ask questions that they have for us that sometimes the admissions reps can answer better for them. We've got a couple of kids who are excited about getting admitted on-site. Kids are asking about fee waivers, they're getting presentations from the Access Advisors about financial aid, so a lot of information and access, that's the biggest goal.
The Girls in Engineering Program at Granby High School held their sixth annual Lunch and Learn in November. Representatives from the school board, local universities, Barnes &amp; Noble, and Nauticus were invited to learn about the program and the remotely operated vehicle the students built. Granby's culinary students catered the event.
So today is the annual Lunch and Learn, and what we do is we bring in officials from diff all over, NSU, ODU, from Nauticus and everywhere, and we just give them a brief summary of what we do here at Granby and what Girls in Engineering is about.
It's really important for women to know, especially in a school setting, that engineering, math, science, that's what organizations and companies want to see, more women in the field. So the more girls we can get involved at this stage in high school, the better it's gonna be for their futures and for the future of our country. Everyone has to start somewhere. This is where we start. If we don't start here, where are we going to start? So that's what we're doing. We're starting here, and we're making our statement in this world, and we're gonna continue.
In recognition of International Education Week, students at the Academy of International Studies attended a fair designed to expand their knowledge of different cultures. The school partnered with Norfolk Sister Cities, who invited groups from a variety of countries to talk with students about their nations. Students also sampled foods from the United Kingdom, India, and the Philippines in the cafeteria.
It's International Day as we celebrate International Education Week. We have delegations from around the world, including Russia. Again, the whole focus of our International Studies program is to expose all of our students to the mini-world cultures through engaging classroom activities, as well as events such as this one.
I think it's really cool, like, we're a really unique program to have here in Norfolk. I got the chance to experience like the different food and see just some of the different cultures in the auditorium. I really liked the food and the Ghana presentation, like, it's very colorful.
I think it's very nice, like, that we can be engaged in things that are around the world, like other countries, that other schools may not be able to learn about. We get to like, not just be stuck in textbooks and just like actually go to people who are from that country and hear from their perspective.
Pre-K students at Willoughby Early Childhood Center celebrated Veterans' Day by giving a special performance in front of a packed house of parents. They displayed their appreciation to veterans through songs, waving their flags, and reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
We've been talking about Veterans' Day since October, and our population is actually almost 50% of the parents in our school are military. So we have just been celebrating and singing songs and talking about why we need to honor our service people. So we had a great time this last two months, learning our songs and our pledge. They had never had the pledge. I thought it was great, great turnout, and the parent volunteers have been overwhelming. They have just created our auditorium into a patriotic festival.
I thought it was great, actually, to be able to see the kids come out. I know a lot of schools nowadays don't really have activities like this for military, but, you know, being around Hampton Roads is, a lot of military in this area, so I thought it was, I thought it was great. It was a proud moment, being, this is my first child and my oldest child, to be able to see this along with the other kids. Yeah, it was, it was something. It made me a proud parent.
Norfolk Public Schools, in partnership with Special Olympics, held their fourth annual Big Feet Meet at Booker T. Washington High School. Middle school students with special needs from across the district enjoyed various activities, including cornhole, the 50-meter dash, and an obstacle course. The event also featured a unity walk, led by members of the Norfolk Police Department and volunteers from local universities who were on hand to help our students have fun. For more news stories and other information about Norfolk Public Schools, watch NPS Now on WNS-TV 47 or the NPS website.
So as you can see, we're doing a lot in our classrooms, in the community, and our community is really supporting teaching and learning in our schools and activities. So this concludes the report of the superintendent.
Thank you very much, Dr. Boone. And now, onto the deputy clerk's report. And we have a face right here because our deputy clerk, Mr. Butts, is out away, and so Mr. Sabotch is here filling in for him. So, he's been doing a great job, and we thank him for that. So now, onto the clerk's report.
Madam Chairwoman, members of the board, Dr. Boone, we are recognizing two, one individual this afternoon, as well as a group of students. The first group we will be recognizing this afternoon will be the wonderful NJROTC program at Norview High School. Will those representatives who are members in the audience please stand?
We'll go ahead and come to the front.
I would like to read a little press release representing this group of ROTC students at Norview High School, my old alma mater. There are 538 Naval Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps programs in Europe, Asia, and across the continental United States. On Wednesday, August 8, 2018, the Commander Naval Service Training Command Rear Admiral Michael Bernanke came to Norfolk to recognize Norview High School's NJROTC program as the most outstanding unit for 2017-2018 school year. NJROTC is a national program designed to use classroom instruction and extracurricular activities to instill students with a sense of national pride, enhance their leadership skills, and help develop participants into knowledgeable and productive citizens. Norview's NJROTC program is the largest on the East Coast with over 400 active cadets, four times the average unit. The Navy League of the United States selected Norview for this honor based on the unit's superior performance across a myriad of activities and objectives outlined for program participants. The unit performed over 10,000 hours of community service, of which cadets supported the Norview community with quarterly cleanup. The cadets also sponsored four successful food can drives, 15 children through the Angel Tree Program, and three highly successful Red Cross blood drives. They also, the 68 graduating seniors earned in excess of $10 million in scholarships, and many more of those Hampton Roads-area high school senior classes. At this time, we would like to recognize their NJROTC program as the School Board of the City of Norfolk Commendation of Distinction presented to the Norview High School NJROTC program on this day, the 28th of November, 2018. The members of the School Board of the City of Norfolk congratulate your program for being recognized as the most outstanding unit for 2017-2018. I am the director of the Norview High School NJROTC program. It is a distinct honor and pleasure and privilege to have the opportunity to address the school board, as well as the members of the audience. And basically, what I want to make sure everybody clearly understands, 583 units across the nation, every state, some in Europe, some in Guam, and at the end of the day, only one gets to be the best. All right? 583. We're number one. And I need you to understand, that speaks volume for Norfolk Public Schools and what we do. 68 students, $10 million worth of scholarship money. Again, most schools can't bring that in. My seniors did that. Not only do they go to school, they graduate from college. I had six of them commissioned this year as military officers, and that's what we do. We bring them in, we work with them for four years, and when it's all said and done, they go out and they become productive citizens in military, outside the military, but at the end of the day, they all have a plan. And you, as citizens of this city, and we, as employees of this district, can take immense pride and pleasure in the accomplishments of the young men and women standing before you, those who have preceded them, and those who will follow. Madam Chairman, School Board members, Dr. Boone, I consider this next recognition an honor to serve, to serve this family. This is in memory of Olivia Driver-Lindsey, one of the original members of the Norfolk Resolution by the School Board of the City of Norfolk in memory of Olivia Driver-Lindsey. Would you please stand, family of Ms. Lindsey? Whereas Olivia Driver-Lindsey was born on August 20, 1944, and whereas in 1959, Olivia Driver-Lindsey made history as one of the Norfolk Seventeen brave young people who changed the Norfolk community forever, and whereas Olivia Driver-Lindsey was one of the pioneering Black students and attended the all-white public schools in the city of Norfolk, and whereas in 1963, Olivia Driver-Lindsey graduated from Booker T. Washington High School. And whereas Olivia Driver-Lindsey had a true love for the young and started her career as a preschool teacher, and whereas Olivia Driver-Lindsey supported her husband of 53 years, Walter Lindsey, during his multiple deployments while in the Navy, and whereas Olivia Driver-Lindsey would assist many families, as she shared heavily in the activities of Ebenezer Baptist Church in Virginia Beach. And therefore, be it resolved on the 28th of November, 2018, that the School Board of the City of Norfolk hereby honors the life, legacy, and contributions of Olivia Driver-Lindsey to the City of Norfolk, Norfolk Public Schools, and the community at large.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, thank you all so much for acknowledging and then choosing to recognize my mother. On behalf of my father, who is at home still deeply grieving her passing, for her passing was unexpected to us, my siblings that couldn't be here, my husband, my daughter that's here, I just want to say, thank you. My mother was a firm believer in education. She, at an early She at an early age was reading, she began teaching Sunday School at an early age, she always loved the young people, children, and she worked with them. I can't, this is very special, I really appreciate it. She did so much over the years, and if there was a child that she knew about that had a need, my mother was supplying that need. When she went out school shopping or doing anything for her children, she always picked up extra to help support other children. Teachers, there wasn't, every year up until her recent passing, my mother was out buying extra school supplies, donating to schools, to, education was very important to her. She bought school books, she paid tuition for other students, for families that we didn't even know, but if she heard about it, she would say to my dad, "We're gonna help that child, we're gonna pay for that class or pay for that book." And she always said, "Do your very best so that you can be able to help somebody else do their very best. Each day learn something new. Always love one another with an agape love, that's an unconditional love. Always support one another." And, and she, and she, she treat each, everybody with respect and with dignity, no matter how they treat you, you show them respect, you show them that you're there for them, you love them, even if they don't feel the same way about you, and that's what she instilled in us. And so I thank you for this opportunity, I thank you for recognizing her, I, she would be pleased to see what we just saw on that monitor now. She was a champion for education, for children, for educators. So I just want to say, thank you all, we appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
These recent presentations reminded me of the PTA Reflections Contest theme, which are heroes among us, and I think that we've just witnessed a hero that is among us, that we all need to learn from, value, and model. Not only with Ms. Driver, but also with the excellent leader that we have at Norview High School. We have many heroes among us, and we're very appreciative. That being said, we do not have a musical introduction tonight. We have many wonderful musicians in the division, and they are out rehearsing right now for their holiday performances. So I encourage you to look up on our music department, all of the various performances that they will be doing, and I encourage you to attend. Post them if you can, to get our community out to see them, because it's a wonderful display of the talent that we have here in Norfolk Public Schools. Partners in our education that we very much value are partners in WHRO, and we are very proud to have today Mr. Burt Schmidt and Mr. Brian Callahan to talk about this very wonderful and unique partnership that we have.
Madam Chairwoman, Dr. Boone, members of the board, thank you for allowing me to speak with you tonight. My name is Burt Schmidt, I'm the President and CEO of WHRO, and Brian Callahan, my Chief Education Officer, is with me, in case you have any hard questions, I've got backup. So, um, it's always nice to come here to speak with you, because for those of you who don't know, back in 1961, this various board, under the leadership of Vince Thomas, along with the School Board in Hampton, under the leadership of Hunter Andrews, created Homeroom One, using TV, the new technology of the day, to do distance learning. Homeroom One became WHRO, that's what the initials stand for, is Homeroom One. We were founded by two school divisions, we're owned today by 19 school divisions, of course, including you. And so each year, we provide you with an impact statement, you should have a hard copy in front of you, and then every other year I come out just to give a brief overview of this report, and then be available for any questions that you may have. So, I'm going to dive into the report now very briefly. First off, on page one, I want to acknowledge the leadership that comes from the division. Last year Reverend Haywood was your representative to WHRO, this year Rodney Jordan and Adele Martin are teaming up to join us, in fact, I guess we'll see you guys next Wednesday, we have a, we have a meeting. Of course, Dr. Boone's been quite involved with the superintendent group, as we have strategic conversations around education regularly with all the 19 school superintendents. Jesse Zamora, thank you for your support with the Technology Advisory Committee, and Valerie Ford does great work with the Consortium for Interactive Instruction. Getting into the report on page two, our educational resources, we provide a service called E-Media VA, it's a digital repository of learning objects, things that can be digitized, and it could be a video, an audio, game, app, lesson plan, but these are all digital things that are all correlated to Virginia standards of learning. We have partnerships with organizations, national organizations like the Smithsonian, National Archives, Library of Congress, but probably more importantly, we have partnerships with local Virginia organizations, groups that have great content that you want to use in the classroom. Those organizations are frustrated because teachers don't know to go to the website, teachers just want the content, so we're that conduit. We go out, collect, create content, make it available free of charge, we have a contract with the Virginia Department of Education, and all of your teachers, frankly, all educators in Virginia, have access to this service for free. You have a single sign-on solution, so when your teachers log into the network in general, they're already logged into E-Media VA, and we're proud, this is a service the superintendents came up with, I don't know, about 10 years ago now, they asked for this service, and so it's become really successful for us. Also on page two, we do a lot of professional development for your teachers, you'll see we have special topic forums at the station, and we also have an online service called Teacher Line, where teachers can get professional development, and actually you can get credit through James Madison University or recertification. Page three, briefly, we do a lot in the workforce development space, we have a service called Skills Online, with thousands of courses in 19 different industry sectors. We also, also offer workplace readiness modules, those soft skills employers are looking for when they hire somebody, and we also have an online GED program called Fast Forward. On page four, our student services, if you don't know, I hope you will find out soon that we have created for you 26 high school online courses. The list is in paragraph two, there, algebra, trig, astronomy, biology, chemistry, earth science, economics and personal finance, English nine, 10, 11, and 12, French one, geometry, health and PE nine and 10, math analysis, oceanography, physics, psychology, Virginia and US history, Virginia and US government, world geography, world history and geography to 1500 A.D., and world history and geography 1500 A.D. to present, along with an online teaching methodology course. We are the manufacturer, we give them to you, you use them however you decide you want to do virtual learning within the division. It could be all home-based learning, it could be flip model, blended learning, whatever works for your strategies, but they're your courses, and you can do frankly whatever you want with them, and use them however much that you'd like. So that's, we found, and what we found is, as we were developing our courses, that sometimes, and the superintendents had mentioned this to us, that sometimes it's nice just to have, if you've missed a class, have a student be able to go online and see that lecture of the day they missed. So we've created video courses as well, which are different than our normal courses, which are online interactive experience. Our video courses is literally every classroom experience that a student will have through the entire year, we've done that for algebra, geometry, and now just earth science, just wrapped up. And so if you have snow days, hurricane days, sick days, suspensions, there's no reason a student has to miss the class, you just assign them the class via the link through E-Media VA for that course, at least for these three classes, and then keep up. So it's a great solution for whatever reason a child may be not able to get into the classroom. I want to make sure you're aware of that, and that your teachers know that that's a viable option for them. Virtual Virginia, we've been operating Virtual Virginia since day one of the program, you can see 57 of your students took advantage of advanced placement and world language courses that are available, it's a Department of Education service that they own, but we've been operating that for them for over 10 years now. Moving to page five, we love to celebrate smart kids, we do that a number of ways. We have our PBS Kids Writers Contest, and you can see in, on page five there, that you had two winners this past year. You had first place in the third grade environmental category, Gabrielle Chambers. At first place, third grade Grayson Hinch, both won, so congratulations for those winners. Of course, the Virginia Pilot Spelling Bee, your schools are well represented at the Spelling Bee coming up again this February, so hopefully your schools are all signed up and gonna have their in-school competitions. Our champion goes on to the National Spelling Bee, of course. And then the Great Computer Challenge, item number four, we've been doing this for over 30 years, where teams of kids come together and they compete over various software packages. I think last year there may have been a communication issue, because normally Norfolk has pages of contestants, this year, last year's a little less than normal, so hopefully we'll see a big influx. And again, just communication to the right computer folks in your, in the division will be very helpful. Page, on page six, item six, very briefly, we do a lot of video pieces with DOE and VISTI and others, but I want, if you are a regular viewer of WHRO, you've seen the spot for a few years now with Dr. Boone, we're about to do a new taping, I guess, next week, I'm not even sure what the topic is, I know the crew's coming out to work with you, and we'll be having a new spot on WHRO in the next few months, so we're excited, I know a number of you have been on that spot, so sorry, we're gonna redo that one and get it nice and fresh for you. Let's see, I'm gonna skip on now to page, let's go, let's go to page nine, our Ready to Learn Services. I won't go through all the details here, there's a lot we do in the space for our youngest learners. You can see we have STEM vans, and we have reading camps, we've got coding camps, and reading buddy programs, literacy vans, and library corners, the list goes on and on. And page 11, in the blue type, there's a summary of all the services you took advantage of this past year, you take great advantage of our pre-case services, we're thrilled about that. I think it helps that we're probably located right down the street, so that's probably helpful, but I do want to mention one last thing, that's not on the report, but we just received a grant at WHRO from the Corporation for Public Broadcasting, a two-year, 175,000 grant to work with the St. Helena Community, the elementary school, the libraries, and the community center, and we're going to be working with parents and teachers, really in bringing them together to learn about science, which will eventually lead to STEM. So we're very excited, using some of the PBS content, things like Cat in the Hat and Ready to Jet Go, we're very excited, that'll, and that'll start taking place, I guess in a few weeks, they'll be starting up, so we're thrilled we got that grant and to work with that community. And finally, as board members, what you really care about is your ROI, page 12, does that for you, you invest each year $2 per student with WHRO, and last year, you received savings in value of $874,000, that's a 12 to 1 return on your investment. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Questions from anyone on the board? Dr. Boone?
Again, I certainly appreciate having Mr. Schmidt here to talk about our involvement. One of the, the goals I've had as superintendent is to make sure we reconnected with WHRO as a district, and we've been successful in doing that, still lots of places to grow, but we also worked on making sure that our schools are beginning to have better access to the WHRO content. When Cox went digital, we didn't necess, we weren't ready for our schools to be able to access digital content, and so now, through the work of Mr. Zamora and others, we've been able to bring in digital lines, and, and in a way that our schools can access that content, and so that's, that's been very productive. So, we appreciate the partnership, we appreciate the support of our teaching and learning.
Well, thank you very much. Thanks.
Oh, Jalen, did you have a question?
I do. Okay, going to page nine, you stated that we have the WHRO STEM Van, the PBS Kids, Scratch Junior Coding Camps, and the Professional Development for Teachers. Do you know what schools you've visited with those resources?
Yeah, if you look at page 11, in the blue, that will summarize all those, all the activity with that, we were out at the various schools, the various programs, do you have that there?
Yes, I do. Very good, thank you.
It's summarized right there, there's a lot.
Okay.
So it's, it's well, well-used.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Thank you very much.
Take care.
We will now go on to citizen comment on agenda and non-agenda items. You may come to the microphone, come forward to the speaker's podium, it may be adjusted to suit your height, state your name and whether or not you have a child in Norfolk Public Schools, or if you are employed by the system, state your position and give facts and other relevant data. If you if you represent a group or organization, ask the others to rise and be recognized. Please give any written statements or supporting materials to the clerk for record. And just to be reminded, you are limited to a time of three minutes. When the clerk signals that your time is up, please quickly wrap up your comments and be seated. The School Board does not respond to citizen remarks at the times that they were given.
Deputy Assistant Clerk.
We're gonna have to approve your statement in the consent agenda. Okay.
Right now, I see at least three. First looks like Leander Johnson. Book already? All right. I see, oh yes, Zarian and Zanell Anthony.
Hi, my name is Zariel Anthony, and I am a senior at Granby High School.
And my name is Zarian Anthony, I'm also a senior from Granby High School, and today we're here as members of Y Street. Y Street is the award-winning youth volunteer program of the Virginia Foundation for Healthy Youth that focuses on promoting healthy living for Virginia. We are here to talk about how Y Street's 24/7 campaign is helping Virginia school divisions adopt, implement, and enforce 100% comprehensive tobacco and e-cigarette-free policies. Under a 100% comprehensive policy, tobacco and e-cigarette use, possession, and distribution is prohibited by anyone, anywhere, at any time. The Norfolk City School Division is doing a great job committing to the health of students, staff, and visitors. Since the first time we attended a School Board meeting when we were sophomores, we have been able to partner with Ms. Pessine and attend meetings where our voices are heard by all of you. Through the, through that partnership, we have, excuse me, we have also been able to begin outreach so that we can discuss the implementation, enforcement, and communication of the policies throughout our school division. Today, our community policies KGB and KGC will be read for the first time, and some of the updates that have been made to those policies are: Expanding the definition of property to include all property, including parking lots, athletic fields, and events on or off-site; Strengthening the definition of tobacco product and use to include electronic smoking devices; And including language about youth possession and distribution in all applicable policies. We are so proud that if this policy is updated, our school division will serve as an example and will join other 100% comprehensive divisions across the state. Thank you for the commitment you have to keeping students, staff, and visitors, and Norfolk City public schools, or at school-sponsored events, healthy. Thank you for hearing our voices and partnering with us through the 24/7 campaign to make this happen. We are here to help answer any questions you may have tonight, and we hope the policy will be approved to go on to a second reading in December. Once you decide to adopt a comprehensive policy, the 24/7 campaign has great ways to support implementing and enforcing the policy. First, we will provide free tobacco-free signage to all schools in our division. Second, our free tobacco and e-cigarette-free schools toolkit will be sent to all schools in our division. Third, we will add you to the official map of 100% comprehensive divisions on our handouts and website. Fourth, we will partner with our division to help earn positive publicity for updating the tobacco policies. Finally, middle and high schools in our division will be invited to participate in Tobacco-Free Spirit Day, a day of celebration for those divisions with 100% comprehensive policies. On behalf of Y Street, we thank you for taking the time to allow us to work with you all, and look forward to adding our school division to the official map of 100% comprehensive school divisions. Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Levon Pleasure.
Good evening, everyone, School Board, members, and people in the audience. My name is Levon Pleasure, I live in Young's Terrace, which is right outside the School Board Building here, in the St. Paul's area, that includes Young's Terrace, Calvert Square, and Tyre Water Gardens. A employee with Norfolk Public Schools, I'm a PE assistant. A employee with Norfolk Public Schools, I'm a PE assistant at Larry Moore Elementary School, yay. And I'm here today to share my concerns and my community's concerns, because many of them are not here today because they can't afford to be. Just last week, a young man on his way home from school, from Ruffner Middle School, was assaulted. He was beaten pretty badly by a group of his peers and a high school student. He's, he had to go to the hospital, he has stitches, and now has to have cosmetic surgery on his face and his nose. It's a very unfortunate event, and I feel as though the community is very concerned about the status of our community, all three of them, and that we would like to work towards a resolution. The original ask was that a school bus route be added to the Tyewater Park Elementary School and Ruffner so that they would have a safer route home from school. The incident happened in a shortcut alley behind Tyewater Gardens, Tyewater Park Elementary School that cuts through Tyewater Gardens that's not on a main-facing road, where the children had no business being in the first place. I feel as though that the bus route is necessary, however, I feel that it should not stop there. My community is faced with a, I try not to get emotional, excuse me. My community is faced with a upcoming situation, and it is coming fast. We're gonna have to move soon, and many of our children don't know where they're gonna live. So we need support, and we need a voice in the community, which we currently do not have. We don't have a civic lead, we don't have representation, there is no entity for us. So it takes people like me, who have to take time off of work, to come and speak at things like this. I would like to present a working solution where we can take our, our children, form some sort of youth, i- if it's a youth advisory council, if it's an entity for children, if it's an after-school program, where we can support them, empower them, and help them face the trauma that is upcoming. This is very serious, and it's gonna start very soon. I would like for anyone who feels as though they can connect with me or any of my community representatives to find a solution and work towards a peaceful and, to work towards something. And that includes the community, the housing authority, the city, and the public school system. We need something for our children, half of the community that is there are kids, and they need something. Our streets are on fire and our children are becoming victims.
That will conclude the public speakers, Ms. Madam Chairman.
Is there, is there anyone else who would like to comment on the citizens' comment portion of the agenda? Ms. Stokes?
Good evening, again, they probably took my name off the public comment because I spoke about something for the budget. But anyway, quickly, when I met Mr. Clanton in his bid for the school board, I mentioned to him at the time, the one big thing that I have seen that Norfolk Public Schools have got to get a hold on is discipline in the school. I didn't know at the time that I was gonna get a position as an in-school suspension person, assistant. But that's opened my eyes even more. I get kids in there, they bring them in, I have, I help them with their work. I let them know what their infraction is, I let them know, them know what the school system's policy is. But you know what? They don't feel the consequences. They go right back, some of them even do whatever they do again because you know what? They like coming to me. But that, but that does not help them to see that the reason why you're coming to me is because of your behavior. We have one kid, hey, that has been written up at least five times. I wanna know how many times can they continue to come to ISS? How many times? I know that the state policy is that they get three days suspension total. But for each infraction, or is that for the total of the year, or is that what? I, I don't know. But I have the teachers saying, Ms. Stokes, you're doing a wonderful job, we like it, because I'm Robocop. I'm telling you, when I go down that hall, you better have your pass, I better know where you're going, and I wanna know why you're out there. But, but I'm saying this to say that we have teachers leaving because, I mean, long-term teachers are leaving because if they can't control the kid because they're not allowed to discipline, they're told you don't have classroom management skills. And it's not their classroom management skills that's suffering, it's the kids that's suffering. The ones that be misbehaving, if this is elementary school, what do you think they're doing in middle school? It just, it just goes over there. So we've got to do something about that discipline in the elementary school. And we've got to have a stronger hand at making sure that if they come to me, they're not gonna like it, they're gonna realize, okay? I love the fact that, hey, when they come to me and I help them with their work, they most of the time will get an A, but then they wanna come back again because they're gonna get, they'll be able to get an A, and then I turn into a tutor. So please, we need to get a handle on the discipline in our schools.
Thank you very much to all of our speakers tonight, this concludes the citizen comment portion of our meeting. Now, we're gonna move on to approval of the consent agenda. And just for notation's sake, we are going to be voting on an amended consent agenda. We will be removing student R2 with the section Student Support Services Report. So would you mind calling the roll for, oh, I'm sorry. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda with the noted amendment.
Second.
Second, moved and seconded, roll call.
Ms. Bassin? Ms. McCampson?
Aye.
Mr. Clanton?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye, thank you very much. And now, we're gonna move on to the decision and discussion portion of our agenda, the monthly financial report, Dr. Boone.
Thank you, as Ms. Ingram makes her way to the podium, these represent our monthly financial reports and gives you an idea of where we are in relation to our revenue and expenditures and the health of our, our operating budget, so Ms. Ingram.
Good afternoon, again. I'm not sure, Tony, you have the report to pull up? But I can go ahead, you have it in your pocket?
We got it.
We got it.
Okay. For the revenue received as of October the 31st, 2018, which is the fourth accounting period for this fiscal year, we have received ninety-one million, three-hundred-and-forty-three thousand dollars or part twenty-seven point seven percent of the total budget. And this compares to twenty-seven point six percent for the same time period in fiscal year 2018 and twenty-nine point one percent in 2017. On the expenditure side, for the same time period, we have total expenditures or encumbrances of eighty-three million, nine-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand, five-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars or twenty-five point five percent of our budget. And this compares to twenty-three point five percent for the same time period in fiscal year 2018 and twenty-two point seven percent for fiscal year 2017. And there were no budget transfers that were fifty thousand dollars or greater for that accounting period. On the next page is another summary of the information that I have shared, but just in a different format where it breaks down the various revenue categories and the expenditure categories. Are there any questions?
Yes. When we have on the expenditure section what appears to be credits or reimbursements or something like that, is that money then available for expenditure during the current school year?
Are you looking at the individual detailed reports?
Yes.
Yes. A couple of items, most of the items that I looked at, they were funds that we paid when we had the inclement weather, when we paid staff who had to come and work during the weather or the extra hours. So those are the expenses there, there wasn't a budget, because we don't typically budget for inclement weather, because we don't know. So at some point during the school year, we would do a budget transfer to cover that negative balance that you see.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the monthly financial report?
Move that we approve the monthly financial report as presented.
Second.
Ms. Bassin? Ms. McCampson?
Aye.
Mr. Clanton?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye, thank you very much. As we heard from two wonderful Norfolk Public School students, Zariel and Zariel, we have two policies up for the board to consider as a first and second reading before we adopt them as official NPS policies, since they will be, since there were significant modifications made, all great work that had occurred. Ms. Bassin and Ms. Martin serve on our policy committee, and I'm gonna defer to them on any further comment that needs to happen for action to be taken, questions?
So we have policies, KGC, use of tobacco and electronic cigarettes on school premises, and KGB, public conduct on school property. Tonight is the first reading, as Dr. Gabriel mentioned, it is an effort to just notify board members that this is the draft that will be up for a second reading next month and with the intent of adoption, barring no major, or no further additions or comments from the public or the school board. So if school board members have further comment tonight, please share them now. No, no comments, okay. Well, it'll, the policies will be open for a comment. If the community have further comments, they can feel free to email those comments to the school board, and we'll consider them for further revisions if needed.
Great, thank you, we're very proud of our young ladies here that have taken on this initiative. We are very, very happy that you all have done this to make the entire division a better, better one, thank you. So then, the process for everyone to understand, we will be having a second reading in December, and the plan will be to vote on these policies in December. Thank you. Now, on to matters of the board. We had quite a few events that occurred recently. We had our legislative day where we, the Virginia School Board Association champions school board members reaching out to our legislators to better inform them and engage them about the needs of our school division, and Mr. Clanton and Ms. Martin chaired up that portion of what we had just done, and I would like to allow them to say a few words about that, if you'd like to.
Okay, so first, I would like to thank the NPS staff, Ms. Birdsong, Dr. Boone, Sherman Butts, who's probably on the beach somewhere right now. So I just wanna thank you all for your help in, in getting this together, and the logistics, and Cynthia, if she's not here. So thank you so much, because this was definitely a team effort. We visited three schools, Ruffner Elementary, I'm sorry, Larry Moore Elementary, Ruffner Middle, and Lake Taylor High School. And we had Delegate Jade Jones, Senator Linwood Lewis, Councilwomen Andrea McCollin and Mamie Johnson, Congressman Bobby Scott, who am I, anyone else? So, and also, we, oh, I cannot forget, we toured the Norfolk Techno, Technology Center, and Principal Bell was an absolute amazing host, along with the culinary students who catered the event, and it was, you know, fabulous, they, they even offered spa waters of flavored water. So definitely a class act, so I just wanna say, I really think that it was a successful day all around, and I appreciate everyone involved.
Madam Chair, just wanted to add, sorry I couldn't make the event because of family issues, but yesterday Senator Lionel Spruill and I also visited Academy for Discovery at Lakewood and South Side STEM Academy as well.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'd like to echo the sentiments of my colleagues, we definitely thank all the staff. I know how much it takes to run around and get things together, so to everyone and Dr. Boone for that. We did have a couple members of our delegation who weren't there, and so we're hoping within the next three weeks to get a time where we can do a mini-version of what we did with the Bring a Legislative to School Day to continue our efforts. I also like to point out that we are making plans to be in Richmond for the VSBA's legislative conference as well as so we can continue that conversation, so thank you.
We'll be lobbying on behalf of EAN and other members, NFT, to make sure that we stress how much we need to support education with the state budget. Any other items under matters of the board, from, from the board?
Madam Chair, if I could, I'd just like to bring to the attention, and I think that our student representative on the end here would be, he's gonna get really excited about this one, but Booker T. Washington High School is celebrating its centennial this year. You know, Maury did that in 2011, but you know, we're not. But I, I do wanna bring it to the attention of this particular board here. I do know that the alumni are working together to, and working with them, and I know there's some conversations that have happened with the city, apparently, but it hasn't come to the board. And so I really want to put it on our plate here to see what we can do to support those efforts in, in the planning. And so, Dr. Boone, I'd just kinda give that to you, and then if we can figure out from Principal Stallings and so forth, how we can support those efforts.
Do you know a date?
It was, I know it's in February.
Okay.
But I will just make sure that it gets out, do you know? You wanna get, okay.
Okay. So we need to get a date?
Yeah, I just know it's in February, it's a Saturday in February.
One other thing I'll bring up, there was a notable occurrence that occurred at the Virginia School Board Association Annual Convention in Williamsburg, was that two weeks ago already? Just wanna let everyone know and congratulate Mr. Rodney Jordan, who was elected to the Virginia, he's, he was... He was nominated as president-elect of the Norfolk School Board Association, so he'll be representing us on, on the state level, and his term will begin as president-elect?
Now.
Now, so, so a year from now, he will be president of the VSBA, so congratulations.
Yes, I'm glad you asked.
Okay. I just wanted to update everybody on what myself and Schaefer have been doing the past couple of months. So we have started principal advisory councils at all of the secondary schools and the larger elementary schools, so what, what is that? I'm glad you asked. So basically, we go into the schools and we meet with certain students from every, every aspect of life. We don't look for the straight-A student all the time, of course, we wanna have that student, but we wanna see really what Norfolk Public Schools wants and needs, especially our students, that's why I'm here. And so, we've started our first meetings, Schaefer is sick, that's why she's not here, but she says, hey. As, along with that, I've been, this is, this has been an awesome... As, along with that, I've been, this has been an awesome ride so far. I've done the, we did the NEMZI celebration. Like I said, we've started the principal advisory councils. I've been visiting schools, and that is awesome to see, especially the elementary school. I read to Richard Boland's pre-K last week, and they were amazing. Oh, yeah, Richard Boland. The new instruments, I've seen the new instruments over at Ruffner in Ingleside, and I gave a high-five to Malachi, who was actually in the video. I was at the Virginia Wesleyan College Fair where they did some onsite admissions, and we got a lot of good information. We saw all the good things that was happening at Granby with the girls in STEM. So we are, we are excited about what's happening with the students in Norfolk Public Schools. I truly find it an honor to see students actually come in tonight from Granby with Y Street. Y Street is special in my heart because I was a part of it maybe five years ago now. So it's been a minute. But I'm glad that, you know, we still have a connection with Y Street, and yeah, bye.
Hold on a second, do you have any performances coming up?
Oh, man. So yeah. If you don't know, and I've said it a million times, I go to the Governor's School for the Arts. Yeah, the best school ever. And we are performing at the Governor's Mansion on December the 18th. And December the 11th, we are doing Handel's Messiah about two streets down at the Soden Arcade. And we actually have two performances, one at 6:00 and one at 8:00. So if you want to see me sing, y'all come out.
Jalen, can, let's get that information so that we can put it on our, you know, somewhere where folks can access that, to come out and see any of the, any of the Governor's School events too.
I have all of them. Thank you.
And they can also go to the Governor's School website as well. Great, you guys are on a roll. Any other comments from the board?
Well, I just want to acknowledge the principals that we have in the room tonight. We had already spoken about heroes among us, and there are some excellent heroes that are wonderful leaders in their school buildings. So I wanted to recognize them and the members of the associations that we have present today. So let's give them a round of applause.
That being said, this concludes our meeting tonight.